Give me more, we'll worry about that.
Good evening. I'm good, I'm good. We had two special use permits, one variance and three subdivision plats on the agenda this last week, and so I'll briefly go over those. The two special use, yeah, special use, or actually, we changed the, they were rezonings, excuse me, I'm sorry. One was the property at, and these will both be on probably next month's, next meeting, 737739 Themis, it's a corner of Themis and Ellis. It's an older two-story townhouse, and it looks, actually, it's kind of cool looking. It looks like it's probably a full masonry project, so it's an old house. And it was zoned in a commercial district, which made it non-compliant. So it was recommended to change it to residential urban mixed density, and it matches what's around it, so it's a, it's a good move. We had no problem with that. They're refabbing the building, so needed to do something with it. The second one was at 2256 Kingsway Drive. It is across from the park between Broadway, just off Broadway there, next to the creek behind Burger King. There are some residential lots next to it that back up to the creek between there and Cheekwood, but it's all commercial from there down. The application was a building that was non-conforming. It really does not need to be a residential use, it needs to stay a commercial use, so changing it from a single-family residential to a C1 commercial. And we did have one quick variance that was no big deal on a sign ordinance. Williamsburg Phase Three Record Plat, I think that one is held for public improvements, it'll be on your agenda in the future. Then there's the PNS Subdivision Record Plat and DKR. Both of them were a lot split. The first one, PNS, is the old Lorberg Funeral Home on Sprig, and it's, I think it's Jefferson. And it's being split into two different parcels, so the rear one can be sold, or sold off separate from the front one. And the other one is a piece that is between, it's off Broadview, just below the commercial development there, between Kingsway, not Kingsway, William Street and Bloomfield, and it's being split into two lots, front and back. It was a sign variance that we had for some signage. We've had a couple of issues out, I say we, cities had a couple of issues, we've gotten a vote on a couple of issues. Yes, out that, in front of Walmart, in that strip center there, across from, well, kind of back from Target, next to the theater. And there are a couple of different commercial applications in town where they have front and rear visibility. And so because of the rear visibility, staff's real good about keeping everything in the overall dimensions of the sign, but some buildings need signage on more than one side. And in this particular case, on the backside, so when you're at the Walmart, Sam's, coming out of Coles or anywhere there, you can see what's on the other side of the building without having to go around. That's all I got. Thank you.
There's more information than you really need to look at all at one time, for sure. And I would also mention to you while that's being passed around, that if you go to the website, I'll pass my business cards around as well later, on the website, cfozarks.org, there's a plethora of information on there that you can glance through when you get time and just kind of get a feel for what the Community Foundation of the Ozarks is all about, when it got started, how old it is, who manages it, what gifting opportunities there are, and specifically, look at some of the items that some of the other affiliated foundations have done throughout southwest Missouri primarily, for their communities. They've done a great benefit that people have given on behalf of their community to a particular project, and to the tune of the assets that the Community Foundation of the Ozarks now holds, is 200, right, just under $260 million. So they've done a good job with, this is about a 40-year-old operation that we really never knew about until we really kind of got asked if I'd want to help them get started on the east side of the state. And that's really where I come in. I retired, as you probably know, from banking in 2011, so I enjoyed two years or three years of doing, not too very much, traveling a little bit and playing a little golf, didn't do any good at either one, I was very good, so. I miss not getting out and visiting with people, that's primarily what I enjoyed doing then. Community Foundation gives me an opportunity to get out and do that again. I would have to tell you that if people say, "What do you like most about it?", I say, "Well, I ask people for money." Well, "What do you like least about it?", I ask people for money. It's kind of a two-way street there, that has some goods and bads. But what I'm doing here is doing good things for the community long-term. We are trying to introduce the idea of the foundation being an endowment, so the permanent funds really never get spent. What's given under endowment plan, we never spend that. You can spend up to 4% of the earnings each year, and in the endowment side of it. Now, there's a capacity building fund that you can, it has no restrictions to it. But primarily, what we've done so far, and Mr. Reddiger, you'll be glad to know that when I go to the meeting on Wednesday, we'll be telling them we're going to be the next affiliate. So we have raised our $30,000 unrestricted money that it takes to get the foundation off the ground. Well, I just would pass that on to you. So after we get to 30,000, which we now have, then we can have restricted funds come in. So if somebody wants to set up a foundation, or a fund for a particular use designated for that use, then we can accept that now. We couldn't do that until we get our 30,000 unrestricted funds in place. So I'm pleased to say that we are moving forward on that. Do all of you have this little handout that I've given out? I'll just kind of go through that real quickly, so if you have any questions when we're done, then you can certainly, I'll try to field those for you. What is a community foundation? I get asked that probably more than anything. It's a community, a community foundation is a tax-exempt public entity that enables people like you and me to establish charitable funds. So this is, this is a 501(c)(3) organization. The main company, the main operation out of Springfield, Community Foundation of the Ozarks, is a 501(c)(3) umbrella agency, so all the 46 affiliates that they have underneath it, they pass the test because they're, they're an affiliate of the Community Foundation of the Ozarks, which means that you don't have to go through all the procedures, paperwork, documentation, and those kind of issues to meet the IRS status of 501(c)(3). After the money's in there, and again, the 30,000 that we have now that's unrestricted, that's, that is restricted, I may have said that backwards, it can't be used for anything other than what our grant-making people select to do it for. So one year from the day we set, and we are officially a foundation, then one year after that, our committee, and we've got people in the community that have already agreed to serve on our board, they can, they can give out the funds that have been earned. But no more than 4% of it at any one year, to any one group. But again, the idea of that is to not spend the money, only spend the earnings off of it, so that it continues to build, and we're, I'm proud to tell you that, when you look through the website and look in the annual report, they have made 8.1% return on their assets in the last 12 years. Now, some of those were good years, some of them were bad years, but long-term, they've done very well with it. And of that, and I may get out of order here a little bit, 1% of the earnings goes to support the affiliate foundation administrative costs. So people that invested, the affiliates that invested in the community foundation in their local city, have returned 7.1% over the past, I believe it's since 2002, which is, it puts them in very good status if you measure them countrywide on foundation management. Anyway, grants can be awarded from your community foundation to funds to support local nonprofits, schools, and government entities. So again, rather than go into a lot of detail on that, if you have questions on that, I would encourage you to look on the website and or look in the annual report. I have a couple more annual reports here too, but I don't have a lot of those left as we got closer. They're a fiscal year-end, June 30th, so they just ended 2015, a month or a month and a half ago. So they're working on their next audit, and it will be out soon, it'll be out in the next couple of months. The mission of the Community Foundation of the Ozarks is, "Community Foundation welcomes, works to enhance the quality of life for citizens now and for future generations by building community endowments, meeting needs through grant-making, providing leadership, and promoting collaboration on community issues." Many, many people, I would say, ask me, "Well, how does this fit in with the United Way?" Well, and the key there is the word on that last bullet point, we collaborate with them. So if somebody wants to give to the United Way, and they have a myriad of, 20 different funds that they give to, or not-for-profits they give to, that's fine, but some people may want to give a larger amount to one individual nonprofit. So that's where, they're all eligible for those funds, and if you want to give through donor-advised fund, as long as you've got the minimum amount in there, and that tells you what that is as well, you can have Community Foundation of the Ozarks send the money directly to whomever you'd want it to go to. It's a, it's a very upscale, I would say, computer-oriented operation. And how does it work? The idea is simple, anyone may use the Community Foundation to give something back to their community. And that, again, is the philanthropic idea behind the Community Foundation overall. Assets donated create one of several types of funds to support charitable goals and are tax-deductible. This is again, a 501(c)(3) organization. They have unrestricted funds, and that's the ones we've raised. Designated funds, those are based on what individuals want to give to. Field of interest, for arts, education, environment, and again, that's not typically where you'd see the United Way funds going, so this is, this is over and above what United Way would typically cover. Donor-advised funds, and that's one lump sum that you might give any one year to get the tax deduction that year, but then you may not spend it all on the donations that you intended to, so you can give some this year, some next year, some the next year, that continues to earn interest while the fund is there. And again, there are some stipulations, it has to be certain, a certain size. Carpenter benevolent funds, scholarships, which everybody is familiar with, an organization to establish a nonprofit, an agency partner, they call them. What types of gift can you give to a community foundation? Well, as we like to say, cash always works. Stocks, mutual funds and bonds, real estate, they are not holders of real estate at all, so if somebody donates real estate, they will immediately want to sell and turn it into cash to put it in, to put it towards a long-term endowment plan. Charitable remainder trusts, these are some things you may be familiar with, but I've got a lot of information about those if somebody wants to look at making a donation in that capacity. Charitable gift annuities, life insurance, and other, I'm not sure what other is, but I'm sure there are other things that we're not thinking of. Services we provide to the affiliates, investment management, driven by approved endowment-building strategies, administrative and technical support, ongoing consulting, board development, educational and marketing materials, legal counsel, networking and education opportunities, matching and leverage opportunities, more than $6 million was given out in 2000. So what I need to explain to you is that the name of our foundation, we are planning it to be Greater Cape Girardeau Area Community Foundation, and it will be a part of the 501(c)(3) Community Foundation of the Ozarks. We have seven members that are from the Cape area that are already agreed to serve, and we're going to have our organizational meeting a week from Friday, 28th of August. Now, I'm not sure I'm at liberty to say who they are yet, so I haven't, I haven't asked them if that's okay yet, so I'm going to hold off on doing that. Plus, I want to make sure that I've given that information. They, they do know we're having a meeting, so they are understanding the organizational thing will happen. At any rate, of the 30,000 that we raised, I would, I would share with you that it was from about 12 to 13, maybe 14 different donors in that group. So it's, it's not just one person that wrote the check, it's not just me that wrote the check, it's a group of individuals that, after hearing the plan, felt good enough about it to make a contribution towards it. Now, we don't have to stop at 30, that's the minimum. So if any of you feel like you'd like to contribute to it, I still have time to accept your contribution, and we'll take that with me when we go. It's not the city that we're asking to donate, the city is not, that's not where I'm coming from. I'm coming from an avenue of explaining to you what the Community Foundation is all about, ask you to support it. If you hear it out in the community, I would ask you to say, "You can check with Mo, he'll give you the more details on it." We think it's a good thing, and I hope you do. And if you go into the website, I think after you look at that, you'll find out just how many good things they've done over the past 40 years. I have talked with the city council in Jackson, the city council in Scott City, and the county commission, so they've all been aware of this now as well. I just needed to set a date with the mayor to find out what's the best time to come here was, and tonight was it. And it just happened to be, and I was hoping it would be, the time that I also know that we've raised our 30,000, so I'm pleased to answer any questions if you might have any. To about 200, almost 260 million.
You've got, some of the monies have come from Jackson?
Yes, they have.
Some of the monies have come from the county?
Some of the individuals, yes, from the county, yes, yes.
Have you gotten any?
Haven't gotten any from Scott City yet.
At this point, you've got some level of interest.
Yeah, very much interest by several.
We're proceeding, and we're ready, ready and active to go. I'm very excited about this, as an opportunity that's not going to pay a lot of dividends, probably during my term, or maybe your term, but I used the Duke Bible as an example. They started theirs about 10 years ago, probably 11 or 12 years ago now, and I don't know where they are at today, but three years ago, within the first 10 years, they created $11 million worth of assets in their foundation, and have done great things, particularly along riverfront development, downtown development, and some other things that would not have been possible without the benefit of their foundation. But I'm very excited about this, and I'm asking the council and our community to get very involved in this as quickly as we can, that we have a great leader in Mo, Sam Virtue, to get this off the ground, and excited to hear the 30,000 is, and we can really become anything very quickly. So any comments or questions from Council while Mo's here?
Always see in people evaluating charitable giving is what part goes to overhead and what part goes to the cause. And I heard you mentioned that it was 1% is the annual?
1%, yes.
So similar to, if I had a mutual fund and a 401K, and it had a 1% cost per year for management fees, that's what we're talking about.
That's what you're talking about, yes.
So then, I can represent to people in the community that 99 cents on every dollar that they contribute is preserved.
Right.
Grown.
Yes.
And no more than 1% of the corpus is ever charged in any one year.
That's correct.
To administration.
That's right.
And one thing that I'm not clear on is, are individuals like yourself who are representing this entity, are you compensated for your time with them, or is it kind of volunteer, or is it sort of?
I'm compensated, I'm the only one that will be compensated on the east side of the state. There's probably two others like me in the state. The whole, the entire group of people that work on behalf of are far and get paid by, there's 18 of us in that 260 million, so the rest of it, the rest of it is all volunteer work. The group I'm heading up down here, the fact is, the group that will be, they're called the Board of Governors. They will actually run the Greater Cape Girardeau Community Foundation. I plan to get off and start another one of these in Sykesville, or New Madrid, or Charleston, or, there already is one started in Perryville, Perry has their Perry County Community Foundation. St. Genevieve has their St. Genevieve County Community Foundation.
The Board of Governors though, serve on a volunteer basis.
They serve on a volunteer basis, yes, they do.
And those 15, 18 people, that's part of that 1% that paid for out of that?
That's, that's right, yes. Yeah, and then they do marketing, they print a lot of paper stuff.
Plus the financial management of that 260 million.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't, don't take my questioning as thinking it's out of, out of character, I want to make sure that it gets characterized correctly.
We want to be fully disclosed and transparent as possible can be.
What assurances is, if any, are there in terms of corpus preservation? I understand that investment always carries risk, et cetera, et cetera, but in the same regard, they have a track record that we can rely upon.
They do.
And are there any other assurances? I know that my dream of bequeathing to my community doesn't vaporize in one bad day in Wall Street.
You know, it could happen that way, no doubt about it, Mark, and we've all been there and probably had investments that have turned out to be the way we wanted them to be. There are no guarantees, but what, again, without going into a lot of detail, if you look on the website, you'll see they have about four different investment opportunities that they make. Some of it, if you put it in the amount that you can get out immediately, and you put it in today, and you say, "Six months from now, I want to put it out," it's only going to earn whatever the money market rate is. But it's readily available, and it's, that particular fund is 100% insured by the banking institution, by FDIC. So there are funds in there like that, but that's not what earned them 8.1%.
Certainly not.
So, yeah, but there is, they, it's fully disclosed in the audit report, in the annual report, you'll see where that, where those funds get spread out.
Are you aware of any situations under the Community Foundation umbrella where municipalities have made donations in that regard or set up?
No, I'm not.
You said you weren't here asking us for that, and didn't take that to be that.
Yeah, no, and that's why, I don't think any, I don't, I don't think you can give. You can put funds, you can put funds to be managed by, on behalf of, but not, you can't give to it, not from the city's point of view, I don't think.
It's not a point that needs a lot of work, I'm just curious.
There's so many other things that I would like to spend all day with you, talk to you about it, but I hesitate.
There will be time. So there are comments for?
So donors to this fund, it was created, could anywhere from 100% designation of where they want it to go, to align the governors to designate 100% where. So if they say, "I want to support child, childcare classes for children in Cape Girardeau only," then they'll be designated or restricted for that. If they say anything in the region that does good for as many as possible, that could be.
Anything. Then what happens to those, Wayne, is the Board of Governors, it'll all be spent in the Greater Cape Girardeau area, it won't go to, it's not going to be spent in St. Louis or Kennet or anywhere else, they'll have to do their own thing down there. And St. Louis has their own foundation, as does Kansas City, as does Columbia. So ours is primarily south of I-70, that's where the Community Foundation of the Ozarks falls in place. But yes, they can restrict them, then if they do that, then the Board of Governors won't make a decision on where the money goes. It'll just be invested on their behalf. They can even say to the, to the investment committee of the foundation, say, "I'd like to invest it in these different funds," and there's, there's a list of funds that'll be available to them to choose it from. On the other hand, if they want it unrestricted, then the Board of Governors, based on grants that come in, that some of the community needs issues will come up, they'll write a grant and send it to the community, to our foundation board, and then they will decide of, of those that were presented, which ones make the best use of the funds that we're going to give them, that they're looking for. So that's, it will be spent here. Okay, and that's another very good question, and the answer, the answer to that is, the final determination on who gets the funds is by Community Foundation of the Ozarks Investment Committee. And the reason it is, is because we can't give money away to a charity that's not truly a charity. They have access to all the charity lists, they, they're not going to get our donors in trouble by giving to someone that wasn't a charity. You follow me? So we have, I mean, typically, they're not going to go against what our Board of Governors wants to do with it, but they do have the final say, because they need to be able to check that out to make sure that's a, that it's a good foundation to give to.
Donations as well would be screened by the foundation?
Absolutely. And what happens is, once somebody wants to donate now, once, now that we get ours set up, they'll send it to the Community Foundation of Greater Cape Girardeau area. We will then send it to the Ozarks. They will make sure that the donation that was received is a legitimate one and meets the needs of an IRS deduction. Then they'll receipt for the people that gave the money, showing that it is a 501(c)(3) donation that they made. You'll So you'll, you'll, you'll get, you'll get the proper documentation each time, everybody that gives to it will.
Question down, for your comment?
If a community wants to, uh, apply for a grant, does it go through you or do we have to wait till we have our own community, uh-
Uh, you could-
-organization set up?
You will eventually go through me and our group here, yes. Uh, but it, it's, it's, we, the Community Foundation of the Ozarks have grant writers, so I've seen the forms that they, you, you just need to fill out the proper forms, we'll fax it up, send it over to the Community Foundation of the Ozarks, they will check it out to make sure that it meets the needs of the, of the grant writing request, and they may, may get back to you and say, well, we need to straighten this out, let's ask this question, so, but those grants will be written by somebody local here, but approved by the people that know what they're doing on an everyday basis.
So if a community wanted to know if it was a legitimate request, it would go through you-
Yes.
-for now, and then-
For now, that's-
-you'd give the proper advice?
I would give them the proper advice and I, I've got the phone numbers to call, the right ones.
You know everything.
No, no, I don't know your everything yet, I'm learning though.
Anyone else? Mo, thank you so much for being here and-
Thanks for giving me the time, Mayor.
And I'm very excited about the, the beginning of this, uh, it has a great, it will have a great long-term benefit for our, uh-
You're right, maybe not for you and me, but-
Yeah.
-we've got people coming behind us that will need the help, yeah. Thank you all very much.
Very good, thank you. Go Green, I think Steve Malvinato back there. Yeah. Go Green's been through some frustrating times and council's been through some frustrating times and we, what's best for council and staff and committee on Cape Girardeau goes green and council, we had that discussion a month, six weeks ago and I, I take it we heard nothing for a while and you pondered it as a, as a committee and, uh, you're back to report.
Yeah, we, uh, uh, you know, we met a couple of months ago and, uh, we have a, a pretty passionate board, we got together and, you know, tried to assess what we felt were shortcomings within the group or within the charter, within our communication back and forth, which was one of the, uh, the, the main issues. Um, so we sat down and, uh, reviewed our charter, uh, from, from start to finish to see, um, if it met what, what our expectations were of the purpose of the board. Um, and, uh, in some ways it did, in some ways it did not. Uh, as we discussed before, we've had a lot of turnover with our board and the board that exists now isn't necessarily the board that was in place, uh, when, when Girardeau Goes Green Advisory Board was created. And, um, so we went through our charter, uh, we, uh, largely kept the structure exactly the same, you know, kind of in, um, the same vein as other advisory boards. Uh, we did address some of our purposes, um, the general purposes remaining the same, uh, reducing energy consumption, looking for efficiency, uh, where we can find it, reduce environmental impact of the city, um, uh, and participating in environmental projects, uh, on behalf of the city. Um, one of the things we addressed however was a little bit more of, um, when the board was established, it was a lot of, let's create these projects and let's create these, uh, services that didn't exist at the time. Now, many of those things do exist, um, so we had to go through and review, what items can we instead promote or expand? Um, a lot of things have happened since the creation of the board, uh, such as, uh, you know, now the, the city does, uh, recycling for, for residences, uh, you know, curb pickup, that didn't exist before. Um, there's a lot of things being handled, it's transfer station that weren't, uh, uh, that are being done now that weren't before, um, there, there's just many elements. So we focused a lot on expanding or promoting, um, various services that the city is doing. Uh, we tried to stay as conscientious, of course, uh, knowing that we also didn't want to overstep our bounds on some of these items. Um, one of the things we really wanted to look at is can we via city council or city staff, uh, make recommendations of things that average citizens or businesses can do that might lessen their overall environmental impact or just be more energy efficient? And these would be non-binding things, and we recognized that and really worked that verbiage in there, so we knew that these were just suggestions and not dictate, you know, uh, you know, dictated, uh, terms to, to citizens. Um, so we did add that, uh, that verbiage in there that did not exist before, so that we could make those suggestions, uh, and of course, uh, stated that, uh, that we would make those through city staff and, and city council, um, so that these recommendations weren't, again, us just dictating to the citizens of Cape Girardeau what we thought was right or wrong, um, and so that it would be properly represented. Um, we, you know, refined a little bit of, of what tasks we should undertake when looking at these presentations or, or working on these presentations, as well as, uh, really defining that feedback portion, uh, you know, it's going to rely a lot more on communication between us and city staff, us and the council having regular updates, uh, you know, as we see fit, as far as maybe it's monthly, maybe it's quarterly, uh, but certainly regular, uh, presentations on what our activities are, as well as regular presentations with the city staff, and then relying a lot more on our staff liaison, um, uh, Mike Schott, uh, to also provide a lot of feedback back our direction as to things that the city is doing. Um, there are, there are many things that the city is doing now that, uh, that I think are perfectly in line with our purposes as a board, um, that we think may need a little bit larger spotlight to really draw attention to, to some of the, uh, more energy efficient or environmentally conscious things that the city is already doing. Um, I think that the city has, um, there are, there are many people throughout the city that really have, uh, you know, have agendas that kind of line up with what we're doing, because if we can reduce cost or increase efficiency, you know, it's a win-win for the city and for, um, for everybody involved. Um, so I think as we can get that back and forth dialogue going a little bit more, we can, uh, promote those things and really call attention to them, which is one of the things we really want to do, um, as part of leading by example, um, which the city's done a, a, a pretty good job of doing. Um, so we've, so we've amended our charter, um, per our last discussion to, to bring to council, so that you guys can review it and, you know, provide ve, feedback and, you know, us potentially come back and, uh, and finalize this, because we want, of course, the city council to be comfortable with what our agenda is and what our purposes are, and, uh, also to have any suggestions or, or changes that you guys wish to make, um, so that we're all on the same page and, uh, you know, we, we're a little bit more harmonious.
Hey, uh, do you feel you, uh, at this point have a full, um, membership?
Yeah, uh, right now we-
Happy?
Yeah, we have a very active membership, uh, right now, uh, some of our members are, are here today, actually, uh, four of us here today. Um, yeah, it's a, it's a very active group of people, probably some of the most active we've ever had, uh, honestly, uh, and, and I think everybody feels pretty passionately about doing things that, uh, will positively impact the city and-
You don't feel you've run out of opportunities?
Uh, no, right now I don't, I, I really don't. Um, you know, I think we've, i, i, I think us really reviewing our charter has kind of really, uh, brought things a little bit more into focus and made sure that we were all on the same page of what our expectations were of the group, um, and, and our limitations or, or lack thereof in certain other areas as well.
Mr. Mayor, I have to inquire, this is the draft of what you guys created?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's how, it's what I understood, I was just curious.
Yes, that's correct.
I, uh, I, I would suggest, or at least I would throw this out as a suggestion, I don't know what the best approach is, I certainly appreciate the passion and, and for it, I read it and I get a little overwhelmed by it, admittedly, but I also, um, you know, I don't know if that's good or bad, so I'm, I'm sort of neutral. My, my thought, or a thought, was maybe Mr. Mayor and, and council, if, if you so thought to follow it, would be to give this proposal maybe to Scott and his staff and pick through it and pick some things that you think is fit with your management of the city, a, and maybe those, some that don't, and I'm not sure I know what those are even on this list.
Kind of a prioritizing?
Yeah, kind of.
Yeah.
And, and really kind of maybe hone it a little bit more and instead of maybe giving yourself too much latitude or giving yourself too many, uh, pulls in too many different ways, and maybe that helps refine the document a little more before I'm asked to bless it or not bless it.
Yeah, well, I mean, that is exactly kind of what we were hoping for is, is, is kind of a back and forth so that we could, you know, kind of reach that point where we all, you know, can nod and say, yeah, we're all on the same page, we, you know, we get-
I, I'm messaging to Scott and the rest of the council that I'm comfortable with Scott or whoever he chooses to take that liaison role, I don't need to be part of that, is what I'm kind of trying to say.
Yeah, and Mike, uh, back there, is the staff liaison, so between Mike and, uh, and Scott, Molly, uh, and whoever is concerned with this, I've, I'm taking it back to kind of critique this and maybe, uh-
Edit it.
Prioritize it, uh, give some, uh, positive future direction on, on several items, might come back, you know, a while after that and re-prioritize, uh, again, I think one of the things, we kind of let you off on your own and, and you got on your own and then we didn't know where, what, what, and I, and I think it got, it got watered down too much, so I think we re-prioritize some things, I think you've done an excellent job of outlining it, and if we get staff now to come back and, and, and work with this, prioritize it, bring it to council, and it'll get it to you and give you some, some clearer marching orders.
Yeah, that's, that's great, a lot of what we base some of these, you know, we listed example projects in here, but a lot of them were based on, on some of the past projects and, and goals, um, and, uh, we were trying to list as many as possible so that if, you know, we're all hit by a bus tomorrow, some future group can come in and have kind of an idea of what sort of projects, um, the city has had on their agenda in the past.
Well, we certainly appreciate your work and, and, and the committee's, uh, efforts in the past and your passion and your dedication to, to continue, um, and, uh, we will, uh, we will be back after with staff and with council and, and hopefully give you some better communication.
I have a comment.
Give you some better communication, at least, uh, to help prioritize some, some efforts.
Oh, that'd be great.
Uh, Steve, you know, I, I attended several of your meetings and of course I don't, I'm sort of familiar with what your concentrations are, and are you aware that we have the Keep Cape Beautiful, and we're a committee, but we are not an advisory board, and I see many of these purposes are, are the ideas that we've been working on for about three years.
Yeah, and, and in fact, we added, uh-
Epps on there.
Yeah, we did add, uh, an, an agenda or an item in here, uh, that says that we should really, as a group, strive to work more with the Keep Cape Beautiful Committee, um, so that we aren't overstepping, uh, projects or we're crossing over-
We don't, we don't have a big group, but we're very active and, uh, we just, we're under the Parks and Rec Department and we just, we are part of the Keep America Beautiful and in keeping with that, we had to submit a survey of the city, of, of the litter, and, uh, it, it was very interesting and what, we will do it again in a year and see what kind of progress, but I think since we have many of the same purposes, we ought to be working together.
I agree completely. I, I agree, that's, that is one of the things that, that we discussed in our group was to make sure that we didn't have overlap with, you know, uh, you know, with your committee because we think it does great, great work.
I think you all would agree that these types of things is a slow progress and we feel like we've made progress. Uh, I don't see nuisance in here really, per se, mentioned, but I think we've made great strides in those areas, and so because it is so slow, but very often it, it's hard to see the progress, but I think it's something that must be ongoing if, if we want, you know, if we want a, a city that we're really proud of.
I agree.
The one, one vote you might consider is, I mean, having just seen this for the first time, this looks great, the only thing I would say is maybe when you start to get to the bold ones after four, some of those should go and maybe like a annual strategic plan or a five-year plan as opposed to charter or something that's going to be around for five or ten years, they're going to have to change that every year, well, we're not doing compost bags anymore because they're, they cause more environmental damage than they solve, or whatever the issue is that you've gone beyond-
Yeah.
-or it's been totally resolved, or instead of LED lights, it's XYZ lights in ten years, you know, you don't want to be stuck with language that's irrelevant, so you can keep it focused on the core areas and then the specific projects change year to year or whatever comes to the page, but I think the idea of refocusing like this is great and I appreciate you coming in for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
For the committee for being a part, in fact, identify yourselves, maybe everybody doesn't know.
Let you guys go, I think they didn't-
I'm Dave Epps.
David Epps?
Charles Hedy.
Chuck Hedy? Jeff Green.
Annabelle Hitchcock.
Very good, we appreciate you being here, we appreciate your work, your dedication and, uh, your thrust to, uh, to move ahead, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And, uh, council, uh, one of, part of the biggest item that, uh, staff will be looking for from you is, is the change that, that he, he mentioned is the portion that says recommending to citizens things that they can do. That's something that, that when they were established, that council said they only wanted it to be about s, city operations, so this would be a departure from that, and so I, you know, that's really a policy decision, and so I'd really like your input on that. As far as the, as the each individual things, uh, you know, for staff, that, that I think that's going to be, um, something we feel comfortable doing, but the other part-
I like the idea of highlighting best practices, I think that's really helpful and we've heard of some innovations that you might know of and they're not, I assume you'd be receptive to input from other people as well, so.
Absolutely, and again, you know, I, I can't stress enough, I mean, all of this would be of course filtered through city staff and the city council-
Right.
-uh, you know, ask recommendations and, uh, not as, uh, you know, an edict.
Okay.
We established a motto of if you care, do your share, because there's so many things that citizens need to be aware of that are their responsibility, and very often they expect the city to take care of it, and that's something we need to change.
Thank you very much. Radio interoperability, I think that's Mark Scheier, Buddy Davis, are you both on this?
Buddy said he's going to kind of, he's got two hats tonight, so he's going to kind of go back there and, and support us back there.
Okay, great.
Right here, member of the city council, uh, Mr. Meyer, as always, it's great to, you know, stand before you, bring a presentation, bring a project, um, that you're aware of and probably, you know, mostly maybe involved for the last three years. Uh, historically, I will tell you that what we're going to kind of describe, we as a city have looked at this probably for about twenty years, uh, I think at one time Chief Petzel, uh, we did a committee and that's how long it's been, um, but since then, we have done a lot of things to our radio system, upgraded, uh, to make it better, uh, to improve upon it. However, there's two major things that have occurred, I think, within the past five years that has really, um, made it more imperative that we do look at a new radio system. Uh, one is narrowbanding, uh, FCC actually changed our frequencies, that instead of a wide band, they, they narrowed it down. Well, that really hurt our coverage area, well, we used to be able to talk back and forth with, it narrowed it down, simply because there's so many frequencies on our, um, so many users on our frequency. The other thing that I think really impacted was the Missouri went to a statewide interoperability network, uh, Mr. Meyer's attended a number of meetings in which we were looking at it and we'd probably go back just a, a few years looking at this system, um, and we've kind of gone back and forth about, you know, how would it impact the city of Cape Girardeau and would it do what we wanted to do here in Cape Girardeau? Uh, so I'd really like to do, or historically, we've been looking at the system and always wanting to improve our radio system, and we've really narrowed it down here lately, and I think it's more for our police department, even though we have two fire, uh, people, and then let me introduce, uh, my co-part, uh, our vitality chief Brad Dill, I think you're going to see him present, present, uh- I think you're gonna see him present as part of the city council a lot more in future years. They really do have the need. The fire is right behind them, but they are very crowded and the frequency that they're using right now would like to expand upon that and we're just not able to. And also keep in mind is that when we talk about expansion is that the present system that we have, everything we do, we've gotta duplicate. And I think Chief Ennis had a kind of analogy this morning in today's paper in which he kinda described a four-lane highway and we'd like to go to eight-lane highway. And I'd really like to go back to that. Right now, we're in individual roads, okay? We can't share the road. We all have to have our own individual road for our frequencies, PD, fire, and there's no togetherness. And what we would like to go to is a highway that has four or eight lanes on it that we can share, meaning that you're supporting one roadway, not a number of roads. And when we say we, I wanna also include Public Works, Parks and Rec, Alliance, other departments within our city and as well, and I wanna expand just a little bit more, there are other agencies within our county and with our state that can actually share the system we're gonna talk about a little bit. So I do have demos, okay? So we're gonna do show and tell. What I'd like to do real quick is Brad is gonna basically, we're going to demonstrate the system that we're using right now. We use a duplex system, right, for our PD and fire. And basically what we do, instead of going walkie-talkie to walkie-talkie, we go from a portable to a tower. The tower hears us and then repeats it to the other portable, okay? So we call it duplex system, okay?
I'm gonna call a fireman at station number four up on three line. Station four, battalion three on fire main.
Is he there?
Yeah, are you there?
Can you give me a radio test at five, please? This is all the way up.
Testing one, two, three, four, five, five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, that's a system that we're using right now. It is adequate to a point. To a point is when, just like our media back here cannot see our maps up here, if you can only hear one part of it, it doesn't do you any good. If you can't see one part, it doesn't do you any good. And that's what we're having trouble with a lot of the officers. We have them in certain locations where they hear us and the next night, they don't hear us. And for their officers, for their safety, this is paramount. I mean, we just, we need to do something. And we've been working with them to do the best we can with the system that we have. Now what we're going to is a...
He won't hear me on that. Let me turn it on. Station four, battalion three, now give me a, do a radio test on fire ground.
Okay, now what he's doing is a simplex is going WT to WT. Now he's talking fire station number four. I don't have to worry about it because he probably won't hear, we won't hear him. We're not able to get back and forth. So radio to radio with the system we're using doesn't work, okay?
And PD also has a frequency similar to this is what they call TAC.
Yeah, and they rely on that. If they're out chasing somebody, a lot of times they'll switch to TAC and you'll hear them, you know, go to TAC. Now, we also have...
He's calling in on a different radio because we're not hearing him. So now what I'm gonna do is call another fireman over at station one on the simplex.
Radio to radio and simplex.
Battalion one, battalion three on fire ground.
Battalion one, go ahead, battalion three.
Can you give me a radio test at five?
Two blocks.
He's standing in the hut.
Received, five, four, three, two, one. One, two, three, four, five, into TAC.
Received, thank you.
All right, now what we're gonna demonstrate is going to a trunking system. Now, I just mentioned a little earlier that the statewide interoperability network, it has a series of towers throughout the state. We have one here in Cape Girardeau County. It actually resides on what we refer to as JCS Tower, Reggie's Tower, just north of county road 620, Whispering Oaks in that area.
Close to 5H Ranch.
5H Ranch would be a closer. So now we're gonna go all the way out to 5H Ranch. This is a trunking system that is able to use the same infrastructure for fire, police, public works, parks and rec, a number of agencies and well over 100 users using the same infrastructure.
Okay, and then just one note, signal strength is about half of what it could be. Keep in mind, the tower is all the way northwest of here. Station four, battalion three on trunking radio test. I'm gonna turn it all the way up.
Testing one, two, three, four, five, five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, WT to WT utilizing a trunking system. You know, what you're hearing is a little bit more of a digital sound to it instead of an analog sound. Now, portable radio using that tower, we can go almost anywhere in the state, but what we'd like to do is demonstrate, we can go to Papa Bluff on a WT.
Well, Ken.
I'm sorry.
One, just one more thing before we do. Like that simplex channel, that fire ground, that TAC and everything, I'm gonna switch over to what we would call fire ground and you'll see there's no difference. Station four, battalion three, go to fire ground on trunking, channel one.
Testing one, two, three, four, five, five, four, three, two, one.
There's essentially no difference between any of the channels. Where here and what we experience, there's a huge difference. Now I'm gonna, this radio will do the same thing, but just for, to speed up the process here, I've got this on region EIO call and I'm gonna call Papa Bluff State Highway Patrol. Papa Bluff State, our Cape City radio test on region EIO call.
Cape Girardeau City, this is Papa Bluff State.
Radio test, sir, can you give me a test count to five, please?
Radio test count, one, two, three, four, five, five, four, three, two, one.
Received, that's all, thank you.
And I will expand on that Papa Bluff, okay? To be quite honest, you have and support a technical rescue team that's a regional concept, but is a statewide asset. We could go to Maryville, which is in the northwest corner of the state, and I could stand here on a WT and talk to battalion chief Dill and we have that type of capability. Now, what we're demonstrating is the Moswin system. We can utilize that system in conjunction with a system here in the city of Cape Girardeau. Our goal is to make sure that your officers as well as firefighters have the best radio system that is affordable for the city of Cape Girardeau. And that's what I think we're gonna be able to present. The maps behind there just show coverage areas and they do show some differences in towers that we would have. We are looking at the Seamo University and we are and have talked with them, so literally they could be on the same radio system and not have to go out and buy a completely different infrastructure for them. All they'd have to do is buy portable radios. And in reality, they could even do portables and not have mobiles in their cars. That's the type of radio system we're looking at. We're also looking at North County Park in conjunction, again, I wanna use a JCS Tower. And then we also look at Gordonville, which is our main transmission site right now. We're a little flexible and a little fluid on exactly what we're gonna be recommending, but we are in that concept that we have looked at and have decided upon a trunking system for your public safety as well as for the other departments with the city of Cape Girardeau.
Cape Girardeau County, Papa Bluff State, region EIO.
Any questions? The rest?
Will this solve what I've heard for quite some time that we're not prepared for any kind of a major disaster?
I think we're prepared. You have some very good people in the field.
Well, oh, that, I don't, that's, I mean, it's for...
Interoperability, I think, is what you're talking about.
Exactly, yes.
Really, if something was to occur with our system that we're proposing utilizing the Moswin system is that literally we could talk to Jefferson City, you know, with the key of a mic. And then as far as other agencies coming in, whether it be the highway patrol, the FBI, any of those agencies coming in could utilize our radio system. We would have the same talk group is what we would call it, the same talk group that we could communicate together.
And Mark, you know, I've lived here all my life and I know I've felt safe and I know that you do the best job possible of what you have.
And always will.
That's right. Mark's almost my neighbor, but...
Yes, we hail across the land.
You don't need a new radio to talk to each other.
No. Do we, do you have to have additional towers to, for this?
Right now, we're looking at what's gonna be the best investment for the city of Cape Girardeau. Depending on, you know, utilizing or accessing the Moswin system may change our tower location. I was talking to Stan today about potentially we may locate a tower down at Public Works, which would spread us apart. But what we're looking for is that we want a system that if any one tower goes down, that the other towers could back it up. And what we're looking for is 95% coverage. Now, it may not get us down in the dungeons of Seamo University in the tunnels that are up there, but we want coverage in this building right here, you know? We want our businesses, our hospitals, you know, some of those major facilities, what we're looking for.
Is this a matter of getting the proper equipment or how long does it take you to get this in operation?
What we're looking at, we do have a committee, of course, it's made up of the police department and the fire department right now. And we are at a consensus is that we're looking to go to the trunking system. We are just really kind of on the verge of deciding whether it be adding on to the Moswin system or actually having our own system that we control, similar to what we do today, or simply that would tie into the state system with a, what we call an ISI, which is nothing more than an interface between systems.
When do you think you'll have a recommendation radio?
I think the next two weeks, Chief Ennis back there nodding that I think we'll have...
So you're close.
That is very, very close, that's correct, yes.
Well, this is really just a update and getting the council aware of you're close.
More than, exactly. I think you're gonna hear, of course, you, you know, read about it in the paper, KFAS did a little bit, and you'll hear more and more about it. But we have, I think we've done our homework, we really have, and it's not just simply overnight.
Yeah, well, we've been talking about it for a while.
Yes, and I think it's been, what, three years ago we came to study, actually, our city council retreat.
Certainly has. Can you help me, without the benefit of acronyms and all of your knowledge?
Sorry.
Can you help me explain in three sentences what the difference is between what you have and what you're going to? Because I know what your problems are. Cross-communication's a problem, building penetration's a problem. These are things that people, laypersons, understand. It, to me, and I'm certainly no expert, but it certainly sounds like you're going from an analog to a DSC signal.
I don't need to repeat, you hit it right on the nose.
Okay, so that's what I, that's what I was hearing is your differential, so...
Newer technology, you know, just simply like cell phones a few years ago.
I've answered my own question.
A lot of us still may carry those little, nice little flip phones, okay? Now, what we have is we're gonna have a smartphone, smart radio, that we're gonna be able to do more with, all right, as well as we'll be able to add technology as it comes about in future years.
And that's essentially where my next question would go is moving to a DSC-based system, my assumption is, is that you'll be able to utilize that for packet transmission, information transmission, which I am familiar with it in the marine application where there's essentially SOS information can be sent in a digital burst packet, Coast Guard receives, GPS lat long in the nature of your emergency. But to me, I see utilization for you guys delivering that info packet. So is that something that is around?
Futuristic, I think that's where we're kinda headed.
That's where it's going to.
It's all...
I'm not asking it to be there tomorrow, but I...
It's all capable, these radios are capable of doing a lot of stuff. It just requires more, more in the radio.
I get it. I wasn't asking to include that, but that's what I want to give to people in the community is it brings us into the next evolving technology.
We can't prove upon analog.
You can't change it anymore, it's done.
We can't do anything with it. Expensive and duplication is just horrendous, so...
I get it.
Okay. Are there any security elements to this system?
Quite honestly, there's encryption. Right off the bat, trunking is gonna make it much harder for people with scanners to hear us and understand us. You'd have to buy a more expensive scanner. And then encryption, you know, PD can encrypt, which would be extremely difficult for someone to break. So that would be a benefit for law enforcement. The bad guys won't know where we're at.
And every officer, every officer looking at includes that capacity.
That's correct, yes.
And I would as...
Android can be encrypted as well, but it's much easier with it, isn't it? Good point.
And I would assume too, preservation of data is much easier in terms of recording, you mean, you get basically a cassette tape versus a hard drive.
Yes.
Mark...
Automation associated with a hard drive is a lot more than a cassette tape. So this is, I have been very excited, appreciate it. I don't wanna dominate with too many questions, but...
Does this have anything to do with the ability to, for like an emergency situations to pick up the location from a cellphone?
Actually, no. However, there are technology out there with 700 that you can, you could do that with our own officers, that's correct. But at this time, we don't have any intention to transmit like vehicle location. We have other methods of doing that right now, though, so. Also, just want to bring up to speed is that, you know, while we do think of the city of Cape Girardeau, we also try and bring on other agencies in our area, the law enforcement, Jackson Fire, Jackson PD, you know, we are looking at trying to make sure that, you know, a person at our 911 center uses the radio system, that they almost have the same identical capability at Jackson and at the sheriff's office, so...
Do part of the other services in the area like Jackson and some of the rural volunteer departments, are they able to head in this direction? Are they, are we able...
I think you'll see that Cape Girardeau will lead the way. And I say lead, Sykesville has already gone to this type of system. I think we'll follow suit and then I think you will see because of the reliability, the coverage and those versatility of talk groups that you're gonna see the sheriff's department start using it. The highway patrol, of course, is using it right now and then Jackson Fire, Jackson Police. The volunteers, it will be a while because of the cost of the system. However, once they go to it, the system that basically that we're building upon, we hope 911 will be able to expand upon it. It's the same system, we'll be utilizing the same system and everybody could be sharing in the cost to keep it up or to expand upon it. We are looking, again, under, you know, Mr. Meyer's leadership as well as Chief Lehrer and Chief Ennis' leadership and your support, we're looking for that investment similar to the earlier presentation that we think we will be able to give dividends to not only constituents here in Cape Girardeau, but the county, so...
Do the other communities have to buy special equipment to that set?
Radios, radios right now, everything as far as grants and everything that's being recommended is to buy dual-band radios, which is what Brad has had. It can do VHF, what we're using right now, and this new 7800. So everybody's recommending to go to that type of system. And you're talking some dollars, $2,500 to $5,000 for this radio right here. You know, your firefighters and police officers, it can be becoming more and more expensive all the time.
And one thing to address both here, I talked to Papa Bluff State on the trunking system just a minute ago. Now, I'm gonna call our central dispatch because the guys already think we're done with this, but I switched this back over to the analog system that we currently run, so...
Same radio.
Central battalion three on fire main radio test.
Battalion one, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Just radio test. So to address your question, we have the ability with these radios, we could switch right back over to analog to talk to our neighboring departments if they are unable to talk to us. There's patches we could do inside of our city limits, we could patch them into our system, so all that can be addressed.
Okay. Mark, Brad, Buddy, thank you for all your work and we're looking forward to the recommendation and bringing this project to fruition.
I, one more statement, though, I have to bring back that Nachele is that her husband 30 years ago, we had shared, maybe you, okay? And really, really look back on those times, it's very, very favorable, but I do remember having to, you know, here, I'll talk, then you talk, so, many years ago.
We've talked about that, so...
Yeah, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Council, in an interesting time, I would recommend we move the naming policy discussion to the next meeting. So we're gonna bypass that, not because it's not important, but because we're running short of time.
Can we go ahead and get that out, do you?
Yeah, well, we've had a great, great study session. Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Yes, sir?
My name is Dave Epps and I'm not here representing Go Green whatsoever. I just wanted to point out to what I consider to be a serious problem. I just wanted to point out to what I consider to be a serious problem. Just on the other side of this gin rack over here, and on the block between Good Hope, on Fountain Good Hope and William, there's major infestation of kudzu. It was no less than six years ago, I do a lot of traveling, and there was no kudzu between Cape Girardeau and western-central Kentucky. I just took a trip. The kudzu has taken over everything from Olive Branch to Tennessee. We got to do something about it. It's a serious, it's an import from Japan, it was imported to control erosion. The citizenry, the property owners, have no way to control it. The poisons needed to eradicate it are unavailable to property owners. EPA has regulated them, okay? And the next best treatment for kudzu infestation is goats. But I think there's an ordinance that we can't have goats.
Sweet.
But, it's killing roses, it will kill more roses, we gotta do something about it.
Okay. Thank you for bringing it to attention, thank you.
Let me just second that, I lived in Arkansas, and it's a miserable thing to have kudzu, and you're absolutely right, so please do check on it, it's a real thing.
You let it go, and it's gonna just overrun us.
Okay, anyone else to, I thank you for bringing that to attention. I see some writing going down here in the staff. Anyone else? Okay, Scott, if you'll take us through the agenda?
Absolutely, we have two presentations tonight, the children's artwork presentation with Muriel, and then the Dad's Fest Day proclamation, so hopefully they'll be here tonight. And then we have communications reports on your table, and I will mention that there is nominating petitions available for city council is coming up, October 1st, those petitions will be made available, and then the process, I believe, is at your table. So, we'll be sending things out, advertising that in the coming weeks. And then, of course, TTF 5, since then, we'll be thanking voters for that, but are there other things that you all would like to mention?
I'd like to mention the groundbreaking of the transfer station, to bring the attention of the September council meetings, the first and the 14th of September. And then, Buddy, I think I'd like to have you comment a little bit on the neighborhood roll calls.
We've been very successful with yours.
Yeah, and I think during council meeting, if you would, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll bring it up as a communication, I'll kinda call on you to visit about that. I think that's ongoing, and I think it needs to gain momentum and gain support. Good. That's my, anyone else? Okay?
All right. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the minutes, and then number two is the record plat for Riverview Court, the second and third reading for that. Number three is the temporary construction easement for the railroad relocation project for Donald Welch, the second, third reading of that. And number four is the second, third reading of the levying of the annual, the annual property tax for public health, et cetera, second, third reading of that. Number five is a resolution for supplemental agreement for Horner and Schiffern, that's to do the design for the South Spring Street roadway restoration project, that's the sinkhole project we've been talking about for some time. Number six is the receipt of the annexation petition for Norwal, and that's out the joining Touchdown Estates. Number seven is an agreement for additional services from Jacobist Engineering for the wastewater treatment plant. We have some additional things that had to be looked at out there for odor control, and dryers, and blower modifications, some of those things, as we're finishing that up, so that we had an additional fee for that. Number eight is a resolution for the license and indemnity agreement for a restaurant going in on Independence Street. Number nine is a resolution for, receipt of another annexation petition for the Evans, that's up there near Bitten Hill and Bloomfield, that will be zoned R1 in all likelihood. So it's receipt of that, so that's, hearing can be set. Number 10 is the transfer of the ownership as a special user permit, that's out off of Lacy Street on Helena, I believe, isn't it? Yeah, Helena. And number 11 is the final payment for the construction of the traffic striping out at the airport. Any items you'd like to remove or discuss further? If not, number 12 is the new ordinance for the Veterans Memorial Drive, Phase 5, we have to have an agreement with Missouri Highway Transportation Department, we're gonna use part of their dirt to build that, and so we have an agreement with them, so that'll be the first reading of that. We also have the first reading of a no parking restriction along Normal, Gordonville, and Bellevue. Those, Normal and Bellevue are at the request of the university, Gordonville is at the request of St. Francis, and in that area. Number 14 is also a request for a normal restriction, that was also with the university, that's a two-hour parking restriction. 15 and 16 was talked about earlier by Scott in the PNC report, those are record plats. Number 17 is a change in the ordinance on Chapter 5 and 15, and this allows us to take quicker actions when it comes to items such as having with the lights, thing where we have a, someone that's violating an ordinance, convicted of an ordinance, and it affects their business license through a liquor license provision. So we went back and looked at a few areas, and were more specific on how that was done. But it allows us to act more quickly and not have to put our police through two weekends of it while we're waiting for that to happen. So, that gives me the authority to do that. And then, number 18 is a solid waste fund for the one-day hazardous waste collection. We were glad to get that grant again, again this year, it'd been a little while since we'd had that one before. So that's all the items, new ordinance.
Any questions on new ordinance, council?
I'm gonna recuse myself from 13 and 14 until I'd like to, my vote to Mark is abstentional vote.
Very good. That's all I have. Anyone else? Okay, 620, council, we do need to have a closed session tonight for legal actions, litigation, confidential communications with our legal counsel, property transactions, and personnel matters pursuant to revised statute 61021, items 1, 2, and 3, if I could have a motion. Move by Lanzotti, second by Bowen. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM.
I don't know whether I'm ready or not, but let's talk a little bit.
Yeah, that's planned. Check out the digs.
Just got done with closing, about 4:30.
Oh, you did?
Got it done.
Oh, good.
All done.
Got the check, it's in the bag. The house, too?
Huh?
The house closed?
Closed it, yep. Done.
Congrats.